It's 7:03 PM, Thursday, May 31st. We'll call to order this special meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board. I will -- Board President Michael Meyer, I will call the roll. Mrs. Fee.
Here.
Mr. Geroz, he's excused as late. Mr. Croner.
Here.
Mrs. Muufeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall is excused as late. Mrs. Weber.
Here.
And Mr. Meyer. This meeting is to discuss employee handbook and associated policies, employee benefit fits related to cash in lieu of health insurance, and salary increases for administration and non-represented employees. We will take a more casual format. It will be the superintendent's role to move us through the items, the shortest and the hopefully easiest first, so that we can come to sufficient consensus to bring any potential matters to a vote for the next meeting on the following Monday, a week from Monday, with the idea of having some decisions made, if possible, before the employees leave for the summer. So with that, I will hand the microphone over to Dr. Erdl.
Thank you. First, tonight, we have Gary Rush with us. Gary is our legal counsel from Buell-O-Vetter. I asked Gary to talk about our employee handbook and our policy that relates to our employee handbook. We are somewhat unusual in the new realm of Act 10 in our approach to it, but our policy does reflect administrative responsibility for handbooks and student handbooks and employee handbooks. So he's going to talk about that, and I've also asked him to just give a brief update about the costing for WEA and our teacher negotiations and what base wages, what can be negotiated with base wages, and how compensation fits, what has to be negotiated, what doesn't have to be negotiated, and how compensation can take place. So I'll turn it over to Gary to start with the policy issue.
Okay, thank you. And I won't spend 25 minutes going through each item, since I think you've probably had some preliminary review and may have some more pointed questions that might get you to where you want to go, given the board president's comments on wanting to move things along. I did want to, as a follow-up to Dr. Erdl's comment, I have been working with the district on the development and review of some of the policies, procedures, and handbook provisions in the district. And a lot of boards aren't nearly to where all of you are. Some boards, depending upon when collective bargaining agreements have expired or not expired, are just starting to look at handbooks, and some of our collective bargaining agreements expired June 30th of 2013. Others, like here, have expired earlier, so that from a practical standpoint, you've been doing handbook review and development of procedures and updating them in a much earlier vein. I think what I'd like to start out by saying is that handbook language is different than board policy language because of its purpose. And I think policy handbooks are designed to both welcome and imbue the philosophy of the school district to employees, as well as provide them with information concerning wages, hours, and conditions of employment, many of which have been handled or dealt within collective bargaining agreements. Now, one of the issues that I think you're starting to talk about or having further discussions is how your board policy on administrative procedures and board policies comports then with the fact that many things that used to be in collective bargaining agreements are no longer, and to what extent you're going to adopt policies to cover things that previously were in collective bargaining agreements. And I guess what I would say is, there's two philosophies here, and one of them, I think, is typified by the WASB template handbook. And if you read the WASB template, it reads like a board policy handbook, okay? Basically where all of the relevant policies related to wages, hours, and conditions of employment are taken out from a policy book and put into a handbook. And then there are other school districts that are basically taking those issues that are in board policies, board-approved contracts, like insurance contracts, for example, other service contracts you have, and then converting them into handbooks. In some cases, and I think as Dr. Erdl said, in a lot of cases, boards are reviewing them; in some cases, they're approving them in total; in some cases, they're doing like you're doing, and that is considering whether or not your existing policy that relates to the inner relationship between administrative rules, board policy, and then everything else, how it applies in this situation. And I, at Dr. Erdl's request, I did try and formulate the pros and cons of each approach. And I think there's basically two factors to look at. One is, as things change over the years and over a given year, how often you're going to want to change individual provisions of a handbook that maybe at the beginning of the year made perfect sense, but aren't going to at the middle of a school year, or even between now and the start of the school year. And I looked at some of the examples, your electronic communication explanation in the handbook. Now, presumably, it's up to date, but in a month it might not be, depending upon what happens with social electronic communication, different cases, different laws that occur. What about paychecks, and whether you use direct deposit or not, and how you go about fashioning those policies and procedures between the business office and the individual employee? I think there's a lot of things, by their very definition, that wouldn't appropriately be in board policy. You may approve your contract with the bank that provides for direct deposit, but I'm not sure you typically would include in board policy the procedures that employees would follow then, as would be contained in the handbook, to get from higher to paycheck, or how one goes about determining what's appropriate in terms of an employee's conduct on social media. Now, some of those things you will cover in policies; others of those things, then, would be expanded or explained in a more philosophically consistent way in a handbook style than it would be in a board policy. And I think, rather than my explaining those differences, I think if you've ever looked at the board, the WASB template, you'll see a huge difference between that and the Wauwatosa handbook. And I think you'll see a definite difference in, I think, the way a handbook would be philosophical, educational, plus the policies and procedures, as opposed to policies and procedures. I think it's very difficult for policies to explain all the philosophical things that the district would want to get across. The other thing is, there are a lot of things in it you wouldn't want to approve. You wouldn't expect the administration to come back to the board for approval. So the welcoming letter from superintendent that's in the handbook, I'm sure Dr. Erdl wouldn't mind all of you wordsmithing it, because it probably, you know, well, it may or may not be a better project as a result of seven other eyes looking at it. It may or may not be, but the practicality of it is it's a letter from the superintendent, not a letter from the board. And so I think if you're looking at it from a, does the board want to approve everything, and then does the board want to change anything that gets modified or needs to be modified during the school year, I think, you know, you have to think carefully about that. I think Wauwatosa, as Dr. Erdl said, I think it is unusual to have a policy that lays out in a very clear way the inner relationship between the various levels of written documents that the school district has. So I think this policy is the exception, not the rule. But I think it recognizes, from a practical standpoint, how most school districts are going to operate as the handbooks become more and more adopted and established by school districts. I think it's not akin to a student handbook, for example, or a faculty handbook at an individual school. You expect them to be consistent with board policy, but you don't expect them to be limited in their scope, or in the way they explain things by the exact language of board policy. Now, I'm happy to answer any legal questions. I think your policy, though, makes it clear, those things and those policies that must be adopted and promulgated by the board, your policy says will. And you expect the administration to present those to you, and you'll adopt those after you review them, modify them, and consider them. Those things that are a matter of administrative policy, that you think the board should review, you can address through policy anyway, because the board is obviously the highest operating body in the school district. So the policy doesn't prohibit the board from adopting policies beyond those required by law, but it doesn't compel you to. So, for example, you could go through, you know, the handbook and say, "I'm not sure I like this sentence," you know, "relative to how we do our direct deposit. You know, why are we doing that way?" I mean, I'm picking a bit of an odd example, but there's nothing in your policy that prohibits you from going into areas that the policy is required by law. And then lastly, all those areas that you don't want to spend time on, because they're not essential or central to the educational or business mission of the district, you can appropriately leave to the administration. So when I first talked to Mr. Chanan, we had a conversation about developing the handbook, and I, you know, spot-reviewed things at the request of the administration. And we talked about the inner relationship between board policy, regulations within the district, board resolutions, and the handbook. This way of doing things made perfect sense to me. It makes the most sense when, like in Wauwatosa, you have board policies that are up to date and appropriately comprehensive. Many of our clients got quite a few surprises these last couple of years when they looked at their board policies that became archaic and out of date, because they were basically usurped by collective bargaining agreements. Whereas here in Wauwatosa, I think, at least the policies that I reviewed relative to wages, hours, and conditions of employment, they were well-written, and they were up to date. And so you guys have done a nice job in doing that. A lot of school districts haven't had to, because it wasn't a priority when you had a comprehensive collective bargaining agreement, which certainly ours in Wauwatosa was.
May I ask a question?
It's your floor, Mr. President.
Typically, do you have any input for us on how a board would walk through that decision, on what items are of a policy nature, and what items are of a managerial nature? And I understand there's a continuum, and it could depend upon the philosophy of involvement of the board in various matters. But just in general, is there any observation on the process to be followed for deciding? Is this a policy topic, or is this a non-policy topic? Or some topics, it may be how you address it. We have a request to the president, to a agenda of the concept of an employee wellness program as part of our benefit package. And I could imagine that the board would say, "Well, we choose to be silent on this. The administration proposes an ensemble of benefits that has a bottom-line cost." The board could say, "Well, as a question of policy, we do speak in some general tones in how we want our employees treated, and therefore, as a matter of policy, we declare there will be a wellness program. End of policy." We could say, "We have a policy, and to have a wellness program in furtherance of particular objectives for our plans." Or we could go way down into helping the administration choose the policy and the program, and the finer details of the program. But how do we make that decision?
As to your first global question, I think the default position is, what do you have existing policies on now? So all those areas that are covered by board policy and are certainly referenced in the handbook, that would be the starting point. Then I think the question is, are there areas that were in the expired collective bargaining agreement that, had they not been, the administration or the board believed appropriately belong in board policy? And then there's the third area, that because of their nature and because of their district-wide significance, the administration or the board may feel is appropriate for consideration in board policy. That is not to say that then there isn't a lot that's left out. But I think the bottom line is, you know, you do an analysis of what is it we currently have, what is it, there's a consensus. And the bottom line is a consensus among the board with input from the administration as to what is appropriate. As to your specific questions, Mr. President, I think, and this is a bit beyond my area of expertise, I think, for example, when it would come to a wellness program, my guess is the board would ultimately approve that anyway as a part of its health insurance program and insurance contract. So my guess is, and I don't know if you picked that example by design, but I think the administration or your benefits consultant would make a recommendation in that regard tangentially related to or a part of your health insurance program, or separate and apart, but as you review health insurance programs on an annual basis, I think wellness would come with it. So when the board approves the health program, my guess is wellness would come with it. And all the detail that you commented on, I think, would ultimately be a result of that process.
It was not chosen by design. It was chosen because it is a question that has today come to me, and we need to figure out how to handle it in the most productive manner. So thank you for your input. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. One thing that concerns me is when we were having negotiations under the previous contracts, we met in executive session, and we discussed things like health insurance and post-retirement benefits in great detail. And there was a lot of give and take between board members and the administration and the recommendations, and we came to consensus as a group as to what we felt we could offer. In the new situation, that's not part of negotiations anymore, and it seems that the boards can be taken out of that normal give and take conversation that we used to have. And so it's not clear to me how we're going to retain the board's input that it used to have in executive session negotiating a contract in the new environment. And my feeling is that if we're not careful, the board will lose the input that it used to have on certain issues. You know, for example, if all we get is a recommendation on healthcare at a meeting, and we just approve it, you know, where would we replace the discussion that we used to have in detail about how the board feels about different aspects of, you know, certain healthcare plans? That's something I don't know how, that we haven't seemed to figure out yet.
And I think a lot of boards have been struggling with that. The collective bargaining process provided a great procedural framework for how decisions were made. And you're right, I mean, the system of having, setting parameters, including great detail on some of these matters, delegating them to the bargaining team, working through it, the bargaining process works through it, and then ultimately, in a ratification vote, the board approved all of those matters. I think there's really two aspects of it. One is, in the transition into post-collective bargaining for all of those things, there's one aspect of it you still have to have some concern about, and if we're talking open-closed sessions, a lot of what you're going to do now is going to be in an open session. Some aspects of it, because of the legal issues relating to liability resulting from expiring or expired collective bargaining agreements, still requires school boards to consider on a case-by-case basis to have closed sessions to address legal and liability concerns. So that certainly, closed sessions are still appropriate if the district might be in legal jeopardy, or where there's potential competitive or bargaining reasons under paragraph F. But I think one of the changes under Act 10 and post-collective bargaining is that a lot of the discussions that were in closed sessions are going to be in an open session. And really, the process, a lot of boards wanted bargaining to be in open session. As you know, under the old law, and really under the current law, unless both parties agree to it being opened, it's closed. So from a practical standpoint, now having open discussions of what typically had been very detailed, and sometimes, you know, controversial decisions by nature of the collective bargaining process, the public didn't know the decision-making factors that went into a board's deliberations, and now they will. And I think it is, it's, from a public policy standpoint, having the same discussion you had in closed session, in open session, is just something that we have to count on. I think we have to spend more time communicating what it is, the goals and philosophy and opinions of the district, the board as a whole, and individual board members is, because board members, elected officials, have to be concerned now that what used to be said in a closed session is now going to be in the newspaper. And that's okay, you just have to remember, you have to be more careful about explaining things to the comment that you might have said in a humorous way, or in a flippant way, you know, not in a mean way, but, you know, you just have to be careful that your employees and members of the public don't get the wrong impression, because now it will be open to the public. But the end result, I think, will be a good result. I think it is a good result, but you have to replace the bargaining framework now with your own framework of where it is we're going to have those discussions, how the committee process fits in, if at all, and then how do we sift and winnow in a way that isn't, you know, our typical way of what makes the headlines. It's not necessarily the most thoughtful comments, it's the soundbite. And so we just all have to be careful, and I think all of you as elected officials just have to be careful, to make sure that you speak in soundbites that in and of themselves don't send a message you don't want to send. That's a difficult problem, but it's a process change, more than a content change.
I was just going to respond to that. Really, tonight is that process that we go through, and, I mean, it seems limited, because ultimately, we're not recommending a whole lot of changes. But this would be a meeting that we would hold in exec session, except we're doing it in an open session, and this is the same type of information we'd be presenting as recommendations to the board. So this is, I guess, the replacement for the initial bargaining meeting with the board in exec session.
May I make another comment, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, please.
In relation to what you said about the handbook, I appreciate what you said, and I'm reading through it, I made an effort to restrict myself to what would normally be board policy issues. But one confusing thing is here is, a number of times, there would be a paragraph, and then it said, "Refer to the policy," or there was policy language directly in the handbook. So we would have, we could deal with that, I suppose. The one thing that I'm a little confused on, Mr. Meyer, is that I'm almost getting the feeling that when we approve the handbook, we're approving every policy, you know, all the conditions mentioned in the handbook. And so it doesn't seem to me that we really, you know, where would we discuss when, and where would we discuss changes to the health plans? Where and when would we do discuss potential changes to post-retirement benefits?
I think--
Things like that. Where would that happen? And since we're only having two meetings, it doesn't seem like it can happen. So that approval of the handbook as is is basically saying, "We're not going to deal with those issues this year." And I'm concerned about that.
Well, to repeat a theme I'm trying to trumpet, that the, there will be, whether, to me, it's even a question as to whether the board will vote on the handbook. That it seems that there could be a view that the handbook is an administrative publication, and the board could decide to pass certain policy guidance provisions that would sort of float above the handbook. And it would be the responsibility of administration to produce a handbook that adhered to those policy directives. We could even take that route if we chose. And there's no desire to rush the handbook to a vote if we choose to vote, which is why I've emphasized that there are some items we will discuss tonight that hopefully will be, lend themselves to discussion just tonight with discussion and vote in our next regular meeting. My assumption all along was that the handbook would not be one of those, that this meeting tonight with all of our other topics, and with the short runway to the next regular board meeting, that if the board chose to dive into the detail of the handbook, that there is not enough time for that. And that, so the good thing, one good thing with having Attorney Rush here is that we can ask him, "Well, if the board doesn't approve the handbook for a number of weeks, is administration authorized to publish an administrative handbook that would be the guide that the district would operate under until such time as the board was comfortable voting on the board's decision on the handbook?" My view is, we have to have something, because we have to run a large organization. And we have hundreds of employees, and there have to be some rules. If the board hasn't, you know, voted on a set of rules, it's the superintendent's job to run the school district, and he's going to have to promulgate some rules for how we will conduct our relationship with our employees. Is that a fair thing to say?
Yes, and I think it's consistent with your existing board policy 1230.1. So that, from a practical standpoint, I think you've already empowered the administration to do that.
Okay, so the board can take whatever time, amount of time, it feels is appropriate to reach a decision, and until that time, there will be a handbook. It will be a handbook published by the superintendent.
So long as the handbook provisions are consistent with board policies.
As all things should be.
Yes, yes, so long as it's consistent with board policy 1230.01, which requires consistency with board enactments, including board policies, other resolutions, and then state law and federal law, yes, that would be perfectly fine. And one other advantage of this kind of system is that when the board adopts a new policy or modifies a policy, your expectation is that the administration will change the handbook to comport with the board action. And otherwise, if you have a board policy and you're approving the handbook, you would have to then convert the board policy into new handbook language at the same time you're modifying the board policy. Because the worst thing you can do, of course, is have inconsistent documents both adopted by the school board. So you'd have to take those actions at the same time. Here, the board policy change includes a directive that the administration changed the handbook.
So we could have policies coming for a vote, and on the same evening, the superintendent, because we have followed a collaborative process, would present a revised book of administrative rules. And the board could vote to adopt the book of administrative rules and the governing policies on the same evening. Or the board could vote into wordsmithing the administrative rules themselves. So it can be done. We do not have to rush. That said, the counterbalancing consideration is that if the board wants to have a say-so on some things, the longer we take, the longer we will go without the board's say-so being in effect, that it will be administration's decision until that time.
I think one of the, and that's why I asked Gary here, because there is some confusion, I think, about the fact that the way we are operating. We have a handbook that has been in effect all school year. And the policies, and part of our discussion, I mean, some of the questions about health insurance, about wellness, those are in our policies. We can address it in the policy. If the board wants a wellness plan, we include it under health insurance. If they want changes for sick leave, they want changes for all the other benefits, we have all that in policy. So I think we're set up, and part of what we're going to discuss after Gary has done is talking about the recommended changes to policy, as well as not recommended changes for the handbook, because they're administrative-driven, but as Mr. Meyer had said, that we're sharing the handbook as the changes that would support the policy changes as well, and some other components, so.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Muufeld, please.
I have two. Well, since we just left off with the handbook, my question for you on that is, does it have to be dated, or can it be more static? I mean, I see that we have some very specific information, like the school calendar and pay dates and things like that. Is that, I mean--
The handbook's meant to be a useful guide to new and existing employees about things that are going on in the year.
that are going on in the year. Contains information I think that employees find valuable. They, they question when the pay dates are, they, they want to know if we've really contacted. It is not designed to, to replace a policy book or to draw attention to those key policies. Way in which that was done in the past was certain key policies, and fewer than we now draw attention to, were actually presented to the employee, they got the policies and the checkoff sheet. I think this is a little bit more comprehensive introduction to our policies. But in terms of the static nature of it, I think it won't be read if we don't include information that on an annual basis, employees actually care to know. And I do think we want to push it out on an annual basis, highlight changes in that message to existing employees, so they can secure the changes, and provide them with some information that might want them to pick it up and look at sometimes. I, I honestly, I don't think people would look at it if it was just a policy book.
And if I understand, it's your intent to make sure that it is republished at minimum every year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question is related to the discussion on healthcare benefits and when we would be in closed session or open session. Probably paybacks off the comment of wellness, so perhaps we are going to look at different healthcare companies, and the administration is bringing to us some recommendations for specific bidders, say, for healthcare insurance that would include different components of plans. Would those types of conversations happen in executive session because they are competitive in nature within a vendor bid process? Or how would those be handled?
I'd say the general answer is no, those would be in open session unless there was such a fluid situation and you were in the midst of negotiating with several companies that, if discussed in open session, would create a problem. But when it comes to looking at various plans of various companies where the bids, so to speak, are set bids, then it would be appropriate to do that in open session. Most of the consultants, I think, would recommend that as well. That is not to say, however, certain, at certain times, some of those discussions aren't appropriate in closed session because what your bargaining stance, your collective bargaining stance and the amount of funds available for base wage negotiations with all of the bargaining units is often contingent and based in part upon what the level of fringe benefit costs are in non-base wage components. So, to the, to the extent that fringe benefit discussions and decisions are tangentially related to collective bargaining, then some of the discussion would be appropriate in closed session, but generally not, I think, what you would consider the central decision-making components.
Oh, just to further clarify then, so, healthcare company A, B, C, and D, the administration prepares packets for the board, creates a table of, these are the benefits and offerings that these companies are coming to us with, that's all done in open session.
I would say, and I'm not speaking to a particular situation, I'm speaking globally, I think oftentimes, yes, that would be in open session. However, if, for example, picking one or the other would change the available amount of money for base wages, et cetera-
That would be-
-and collective bargaining things, a discussion to say, "The amount of money available for collective bargaining would change the percentage or dollar amount available by this much if we took quote A versus quote C," that part of it would be appropriate, because the main topic is collective bargaining and the parameters on which you're putting bargaining. But discussing whether or not the network in one company is, has wider appeal than the network in another company, I think, generally speaking, that would be an open session discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment, Mr. Croner, please?
One scenario that I envision, and I hope might come to pass, is in many places in the book, it says that, you know, the board reserves the right to make changes, you know, at any time. And I, you know, almost everything in here, I think, is, is fine, but for some of the bigger issues, like maybe healthcare, or the board decides they want to look at post-retirement benefits a little more closely, I'd assume that we could approve the handbook and then set a timetable, you know, by September 1st, or, you know, study those other issues, and then be able to make changes later. Because my feeling is that we're, we're cementing in those benefits by voting on the handbook at the next meeting, and if we could pick a couple of issues that the board is interested in investigating and preserve the right to change them later if we wish, that seems like one way we could proceed.
You won't be approving the handbook, you'll approve the policies. So, for example, as I mentioned, the, the health insurance plan is in the policy. So, what you're approving is the policies, then we take the policies, whatever changes they are, and we make sure it's communicated in the handbook.
For example, you'll notice in the album, references to people's benefits, it really is just a link to the policy, to the general explanation, like, here are some of the benefits we generally offer, whatever, whatever employee type you are, refer the board policy, because that is the, the statement of, of the event. And if that policy changes, may need to alert people that underlying policy has changed, but we probably wouldn't have to rewrite the handbook, because the links to the policy remain the same. So, it's written in such a way to give flexibility to the administration to tweak, whether it's dates or other small items, you know, for example, the phone number for the EAP is in here. Not, not really a board issue, it's informational, employees. But the board has that ability to change the policy, and in some cases, that automatically updates the handbook, because it just references the policy, and in others, they require a little rewriting, but it's not, if this were to be a board policy, it would have to be rewritten.
So, then, so then a motion we would have would be just simply a list of every policy that applies to the handbook, is that what we're seeing in the future?
No, I, I actually think that, that, that this should be brought back for informational purposes, so you see the change being made, but I, this would have to be a different handbook. It would kind of be voted on, it really would be. And if the policies already exist, I guess I don't know why you would write an abbreviated version, because the fear is, what you want to avoid, in, in having two sets of conflicting language applying to the same situation, where one is not subordinate to the other. And I think it's very clear right now that board policy is, is the ultimate decision.
So-
And this is really just a, a summation for reference.
When we finish this process, then will we just be voting on the policies that are changed?
Or that are changing?
That are changing?
Yes.
Okay, so, and every policy that doesn't change wouldn't be listed, because it's just staying the same?
Right, yeah, here's, I, maybe here's the-
The language has been used that we're voting on the handbook many times, so I was just-
Not from administration.
Yeah.
No, and that, that's what, I mean, that's really the ultimate reason I wanted Gary to come here tonight to talk about it. Maybe the best way to even look at this whole discussion tonight is take the handbook out of the discussion, put it off to the side, because the policies that we're, we're recommending will, will, will be addressed in the handbook by administration and changed according to any of the changes that come there. So, that, I think that's the, the confusing part of it, trying to take the confusion-
The handbook should be presented, I guess, for informational purposes. The reality is, for example, the, I'm trying to think of, the recommended change for example to the policy 3422A, that actually didn't require any changes to the handbook, because the handbook just said, "If you're special staff member, teacher, cease policy 3422A."
Okay.
So, in other cases, it might require revision if there were specific language, for example, in our grievance procedure that conflicted with the way in which we described it, because we do try to be a little more, just to blend, every time we blend the book, it would be very friendly. So, the question is, is there language in that handbook that conflicts that we need to conform, or is it just okay the way it is? Again, we do try to be general enough, because the reality is, not every employee group has the same benefits.
Okay.
Listing holidays, for example. Rather than list holidays out and say, "This group has this, this group has this, this group has this," which would be a very long list of different holidays, we simply reference that, there are paid holidays depending on the employee group's policy. In reality, we've got a, one of the purposes, I think, of the handbook, encourage staff to delve into and friendly manner what our key policies are, and encourage them to actually read the actual board policy. Now, putting in front of them, the binder of board policies, which we've all seen, is intimidating stack of policies. We want to invite them in, we want to show them where they are, we want to summarize them so they know whether or not something they've been wanting to read more on, and draw them in, so to speak. We're really not trying to replace or duplicate board policy in this. You know, and there, there are even some documents that are referenced that aren't board policy, so it's meant to be a one-stop place for people to get to know things.
Okay, so, help me out. You've presented in our packet two policies, both 3422A and 3422E, and you've presented an employee handbook. Please clarify for us whether the policies can, should, and can, can and should be brought to a vote as an action item at our next meeting without bringing to discussion and a vote the handbook? And I'm not saying I'm for or against discussion and vote on the handbook, I'm totally open on all questions here tonight, or as why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that it could be, I think that, for example, policy 3422E is new. Now, assuming that that was going to be voted on, I updated the handbook, I have a link to it, active yet, because it's out, it's the website. If it doesn't get voted on, I would publish a version of the handbook without that, with the old link in, and it would be different. I don't think the timing of your policies are completely independent of the handbook, because you don't have to vote on the handbook, because you already have a policy authorizing Dr. Earl's late handbooks.
Okay.
Certain reasons, I don't think it matters, it's just, it, it matters to us what version we publish, but we would update it whenever you update policies.
Yes, I would like to have the policies voted on at the next meeting. I mean, I, and I, after, after Gary has done, I will preface some comments about our administrative approach and our recommendations for policy changes for this year, and I think, hopefully it'll make some sense, and I, I'm, we're not recommending major changes, and that's why I think it could, the board, it's the board's prerogative to change recommendations and, and do what you would like, but I'll, I'll get into that too and explain more why I think it can be approached that way.
Okay, so, with that as ground rules, we understand now what we have the sequence through, what we can vote on at the next meeting if we get that far, and what we don't have to vote on, how the district will operate if we do or we don't vote. And as one final consideration, I'd say that moving forward, as we look at the question of what the board will consider in a policy conversation, that when we are in a collective bargaining situation, the union was relied on by the board to some extent to represent the altruistic interests of the employees. And the, the board was able therefore to focus more on the financial outcomes related to the contract, that we relied on the union to represent the cultural, the preferential interests, stewardship in, in relationship to the employees. That voice is not there to balance with anymore, and to the extent that the, the school board chooses the, to act as an employer with some stewardship role with respect to its hundreds of employees, to the extent that the community wants the board to consciously and proactively make decisions on how we will treat the employees who are in turn responsible for our children on a day-to-day basis, that is something we will all have to work our way through. And there's no cookbook formula tonight, but just to say, it, it should be explicit in our consciousness that we have decisions to make about how to proceed on all matters with respect to our employees going forward, that we have that dual role now, not just the employer role, we, the, the, there's not the union there in many respects speaking for the employee interests anymore. Anyway, so with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent, and you can cycle us through these items that you wish to have us address, please.
The last thing for Gary, just to discuss is, the, if you can do give a brief explanation of base wages, what has to be negotiated with base wages and supplemental pay, and just some concepts related to that.
I will be, I, I know you're at closed session to discuss this at a later time, but in essence, as you'll recall, there's been two versions of the WERC rules that were considered and published by the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission concerning the definition of base wages and how they are collectively bargained with the various collective bargaining groups with which the board deals. The original version said that to determine the amount of money that may be bargained without having a referendum for the 11, 12 school year, for example, you took a snapshot, basically on January 1 of 2011, determined what everyone's pay was minus clubs and coaches and extra pay, and that became the base times the COLA cap, which is 1.64, and then that gross dollar amount became the dollar amount above which the board could not negotiate a base salary increase with the association, for example, without having a public community referendum. The governor's office rejected that proposed way of doing it. As you know, the legislature authorized a law saying the governor's office had to approve rules and regulations that came out of administrative agencies of the state. So, ultimately, by a two-to-one vote, the WERC adopted a rule that basically said, "The way the base wage will be determined is by taking everyone's current place," and I'm, I'm going to simplify this, because, you know, John and, and the administration can go through how it affects you in your particular, with the salary schedule, et cetera, et cetera. But if you basically take the scattergram that you would have with the teachers at various places on the salary schedule that had experience increments and educational and degree marks along the horizontal top of the salary schedule, if you take everyone in their current place on the scattergram, move them as far left as they can go, except those whose positions require a master's degree, in which case you only put them on the masters with no credits laying, you add up everyone's salary by moving them left, masters degree people are generally guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers, maybe OTs and PTs if you've got them, so that from a practical standpoint, everyone would stay on the same experience step, but would move as far left as they could to the lowest BA salary with their number of years of experience, or for a few, the lowest MA salary with their years of experience. You would add all those up, multiply it by the approved percentage, which for 11, 12 is 1.64, for 12, 13 is 3.16, and that dollar amount may not be exceeded by the board in collective bargaining on base wage increases without a referendum. Now, that all said, I'll just mention these things, and then, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, and it depends how detailed you want me to be, but that is, you may want to give increases outside of the base wage, because in most school districts, the amount subject to the base wage negotiations may amount to somewhere between 65 and 80 percent of everyone's total salary. The Act 10, of course, gives you the ability to increase other supplemental pay by an amount determined by the board for unionized employees. So, for example, the WERC in its rules say that you may give an increase based upon- So, for example, the WERC in its rules say that you may give an increase based upon another years of experience, which was the old step increase outside of the base wage increase, or you may give pay for performance, or you may give merit pay on a lump sum basis outside the base wage increase, but if it's added to the salary, it's within the base wage amount, which is kind of an anomaly that might be inconsistent with Act Ten. But that all said, to the extent that base wage increases are capped without a referendum, you could go over that, but you'd have to have a community referendum, to the extent you're allowed to give increases unilaterally outside of the base wage increase, you could then fashion an increase that amounts to a given amount of money that you believe is appropriate for the employees as a whole and individual employees. The new WERC rules require the board to bargain distribution as well. Unlike the first set of rules where you could only negotiate a lump sum, it was silent as to distribution. Now, who gets what amount of money or what class of employee gets what amount of the increase would be subject to collective bargaining and mandatory subject to bargaining. But everything outside of base wages would be a prohibited subject of bargaining, but things you give outside of the base wage, the next year may become a part of the base wage calculation for a subsequent year. So the anomaly here is that you couldn't bargain a step increase under the current rules, but if you unilaterally give a step increase, it would become a part of the base wage the next year upon which the allowed percentage cap would be based. And I know that probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's what two-thirds of the WERC adopted. And the way I've just explained it, I don't think is readily apparent from reading the rules themselves. I think as the administration will probably explain to you or has explained, you really have to read the dissent of Sue Baumann, a holdover from the Doyle administration who reflects concerns about these new rules, who then in reflecting concerns, explains the rules as I've just explained it. Sources within the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission. Sue Baumann's explanation of how the rules operate, about which she has great concern, is accurate. Not concerns are necessarily accurate, but her explanation of how they operate is accurate.
Yes, just briefly, please.
For retirement purposes, is the, is the total wage considered the base wage plus whatever extra lump sum the district pays the employee, like if the five point eight percent that we contribute to retirement and that they contribute?
No. Well, if you give an increase outside of the base wage that is salary, it would be part of the WERC basis on the W, the WRS calculations would be. Let's say a particular employee got a five hundred dollar base wage increase and you gave a two hundred dollar experience increment, their WRS contribution and their WRS wage base would be. But if you gave five hundred dollars in a base wage increase and two hundred fifty dollars in performance pay, that next year only five hundred dollars would count for it, off of which the next year's percentage would be based, whereas if you give it as an experience increment. So the important thing the board has to do, if it decides to give any increases outside of the base wage amount, is make sure that you are precise in how they are categorized and described so that you don't get into a problem determining next year whether it's a part of the base wage percentage calculations or not. And then also remember that, you know, there has been talk that these rules will be subject to litigation in any event, so as you're bargaining, just keep in mind that it is possible, you know, that there may be a change in the rules themselves by action of the courts themselves at a later date. But of course, it would be cap, you'd probably settle, not like a bargain.
Thank you. Okay. There he goes. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
The, the next component, and we'll skip the, to avoid the confusion, the associated policies related to, to employee benefits, employee work, working conditions, or employee benefits, also included the employee benefit related to cash in lieu of health insurance. And the reason that's listed separately is because it's not listed necessarily in policy or in, in agreements, but it was in the collective bargaining agreement with the teachers, but we do want the board to take action on it. I first want to start out with the philosophical approach that, in particular, was Mr. Mack, Mr. Chanan, and myself took in crafting these changes, and it, I think simply it's a reflection of, I think we're operating in a good place right now. I think our employees have taken a significant hit financially in the past year, anywhere from, I believe it was seven percent to, depending on how you calculate it, up to thirteen percent. And the, we're trying to limit the changes that would negatively impact the employees. And I think there's a couple of factors and the reasons why I feel like we can do it and why we're recommending it. And I know there's, there was a discussion about, well, the cash in lieu is one thing, and that is intended to go back into the pool because we know the revenue limits are only going up fifty dollars per, per member for this coming year, so that's going to free up some money to be able to use in a different place. The other recommendation that's on here is for changing the, how we calculate years of service and just going to the total FTE for years of service and skipping the language of before two thousand and before and after whatever the years, and you've got half the years if you're part-time, it's just saying you get credit for the years you were here and the partial years you were here. But I think that most of the changes we're recommending are really wording changes. One of the questions about a wellness program is Mr. Mack and Mr. Chanan have been working with our insurance consultant and moving in the direction of developing, of implementing a wellness program for our employees and looking at, the recommendation at this point from our consultant is doing a pilot, somewhat of a pilot program for the first year and then mandating it for the second year and moving into a wellness program. There are some costs associated with it, but ultimately with a wellness program, you hope to reap financial gain and ultimate gain for the employees in their health, long-term. So that's something that we're working on, and if the board wants more information, we could bring that back as a recommendation in the future too, before the start of next year, but I know the two of them have been working with, with our consultants on that. But the, the early retirement piece, and I know there was a question from a board member about that, we've taken steps to really reduce our OPEB liability from all employees. I know the age was an issue, and all employees hired after two thousand and ten, or all teachers hired after two thousand and ten do have the age of fifty-seven and also are limited in their benefit to, I think it's a hundred and thirty-five percent of their salary if they're here for thirty years. I don't have the exact numbers, but long-term employees. So we've really taken steps with administration. It's anybody starting in two thousand and five and after are under a new retirement plan, so I think we've, including a fifty-seven age limit, so I think we've done some things that have really limited our liability with that, and that's why we're not recommending any changes to it. We think we're in a fairly good place. I think Mr. Mack can talk more about the, the limits of the number of employees, I think is a key, key factor in how we control our OPEB and post-retirement costs by limiting the number of people that can go out and be limited at this point to twenty-five every two years. I know it used to be at twenty prior to a negotiation several years ago, but that does keep our costs in a, in a good place. And I think probably one of the most significant changes made last year, financially that has helped us, is our health insurance. And at this point, Mr. Mack, why don't you kind of talk about health insurance and talk a little bit about the post-retirement, the controls we have in place because of the limit of number of employees that can go out?
Okay, first on the, on a post-retirement benefit, one of the biggest factors that we've had to control the cost, you know, like I said, is simply, we have a limit on the bottom of how many people can retire per year, and what that does is, even though you might see on our GADBI financial statement, the growing OPEB liability, the fact that on a cash flow basis, it cannot get any bigger than the maximum allotted because we have that, it's like having a giant pool of water, but you have a, a constrictor underneath it, and no matter how big the pool is, much can flow out of the hose at one time. And that's what has saved us and why our OPEB costs have remained relatively in, in very good control compared to other places. Got to understand that some districts, all of a sudden, they might have sixty people retire, and you could see all that could affect your, your cash flow because all of a sudden, you have a lot of extra money going out through retirement benefits. We don't have that, we never have had that, and those limits on, right now, there's a, there's a control limit on the teachers, twenty-five over two years, it used to be twenty over two years, but we haven't seen a significant change even with the twenty-five as far as the total number of people that are retired at any one point in time. The administrators had one or two people, I believe. We currently don't have any control on the other groups, and the only one we're maybe a little bit at risk on is the custodial group, just because they're a larger group. The WISA group is rather small, and exempt employees, the non-bargaining is small, and very few retirees come out of those groups. So, just, just from that point of view, that's one of the most and easiest protective measures any school board could put on to control their benefit cost, is simply limit how many people can go out every year, and we've always had that, and that's something that has helped us since day one. So, that, that being said, the switch in employee benefits this past year for the health insurance plan to the high deductible health plan has helped us tremendously. And one of the big factors that has helped us, as I've been seeing it, is the fact that now the retirees that we allowed to stay in our group plan that are over sixty-five, we're not really paying for them anymore, but they actually could stay with our group, they're in their own plan now, because they can't be with, with Medicare benefits, you can't be in a high deductible health plan. So they were opted out into their own control group, basically, and whatever the premium increase for that group is, it doesn't affect the premiums for the school district anymore, which is really good. So that, that risk is gone, and that has helped us because that group can either maybe help you a tiny bit stay even, but they usually end up hurting the increase. So people who are active actually end up paying for, for that group of people. So that, that was a big help.
The cash in lieu piece I'll just touch on as well. The reason we're recommending, the other reason we're recommending eliminating it is that there really is no benefit to the district to have that anymore. With a high deductible plan, the purpose of, of paying people to not take our plan was to save money, but with a high deductible plan, it doesn't make sense to pay people. It's cheaper to have them on, actually on the plan than to pay them out the two hundred dollars a month, so that's part of the recommendation. I think it's a, it's a solid current business decision as well as one that we want to be able to free up dollars as well. Mr. Chanan, if you want to just walk through and highlight the policy changes that we're recommending, and then we can...
Mr. Mark, can we ask questions about this topic before we move on?
Is that good for your continuity, or is that okay, or would you rather keep going and take questions at the end? I don't know how much you have, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, well, we can, I think, that's fine. Take a question.
Okay, yeah.
Since we just talked about it. My question about the number of retirements was not that there was a cap, but it just seemed illogical to me to have twenty one year, five the next year, and then go back to a two-year cycle, when the two-year cycle evolved during negotiations. Why not just have, say, twelve per year or fifteen per year and just make a steady number every year, which makes it economically more predictable?
No, I don't think it makes any difference, and it's actually, in my opinion, much fairer to the group of employees because of the way people retire, they have the limit over two years, simply because somebody who has, could you get some seniority bumping in there? And, and it might, it might work to the advantage of somebody that might want to stay on one extra year that had more, more seniority, and if the person underneath them, they might end up opting out, rather if they stayed, they might get bumped out completely out of the pool. I know it, maybe I'm not explaining that exactly right, but it, it gives them more flexibility is what it does, and we, we control that because it's still over two years, it's the same thing. So from, from my point of view, it doesn't really matter.
One of the concerns I would have is when somebody's ready to go, they're ready to go, and to keep them here, if we limited it per year, there's a possibility, and we've seen, we've seen it with some of these limiting twenty-five, that they could get stuck for three, three years, I don't know about more than three years, but they could be, I shouldn't say stuck, they would be limited from the possibility to retire with the benefits. And from an instructional point, if somebody doesn't want to be here, and I guess I, I don't want to keep them, keep them in the classroom or keep them here, that might not be good rationale, but I guess in my experience, I've, I've seen people that really are ready to go and for whatever reasons aren't able to, and I don't think it's a productive situation for a school, for kids, for education.
You've made that argument...
So, may I clarify, so are you saying the two-year gap timeline facilitates that, Dr. Erdl, or are you wanting a one-year timeline? What, what works best from that perspective?
My perspective is that the two-year, similar to Mr. Mack, and the two-year creates more flexibility for the employees.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Crowder, please go ahead.
You've made the argument several times, Dr. Erdl, about if employees want to go, I don't want to have them here. I have a feeling that if retirement age was fifty-two, a lot of employees would get tired of teaching at fifty-two and want to leave, and if we made it at fifty-seven, they would get tired at fifty-seven and want to leave. I mean, they get tired and want to leave at fifty-five because that's when they can leave, you know, so that's not a strong argument for, for making someone go. I mean, if we made, if they want, if we let them retire at fifty, I bet a lot of people get tired of teaching at fifty and want to leave, so it's just, it's all relative.
I, it just comes from my experience of having many discussions with employees that are at the retirement age, and that's just my, my perception of it.
Okay, well, thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add something to that, just so you understand too, that to get that, even at fifty-five, when you're looking at the teachers, they have to have thirty years in, so they ought to start really early if they're going to do that, so that's where I don't, I'm not too sure that argument really is, you know, fifty-two, because I think they'd have to be there before they finish college to get that thirty years to get to that point, so I, I don't know, you know, that's why if somebody to hit fifty-five and have the thirty years in, they ought to be here almost right out of school. So just, just think of it from that way, too. I mean, I, just, it's a little bit different perspective of what, what you were saying on that. That's all I want to point out.
Okay. Please continue.
Ms. Chanan, you want?
Were there other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, were there other questions?
Just, real quick one, did you, was there a dollar amount given for the, in lieu of reduction?
Dollar amount?
Dollar amount for cash in lieu of?
Oh, how much in total? The whole district is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and...
And that's each year?
That's with everybody, the teachers, and, and the only thing is, if, if the, if the WISA group and a fifteen-sixty-one union hold on to their contract, there'll be fifty to seventy-five thousand left in that pool. I mean, somewhere in that range, I don't know what it is exactly, I think there's somewhere in that range. How many people exactly, I don't know, but, so there might be two hundred thousand gone if we reduce that, and I would back with Dr. Erdl, a hundred percent, we don't need it anymore, simply because it doesn't save us any money, there's no benefit for the district, so it, it's, it's a, it's a... So, it's a, it's a method of saving money that is gone by the wayside.
Okay, so you're saying about 250,000 a year?
If everybody, if everybody, but there's two groups that still are under a union contract. If they keep their contracts for at least one more year, there'll be like 50,000 or plus in, still left in the cash flow pool.
And does that also take into account or assume that type of insurance plan that we're offering now is going to remain similar to what it is in the amount of co-pays and all of that?
Yes.
Okay, so you can, okay, and then the other last question is, and I don't need a specific, but are you going to be bringing a recommendation for that specific amount of money? How it'll be used or are you simply, and if you have something specific, I don't need to know now, I just, I'm wondering if...
It'll be part of a later discussion.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Really, again, to go on that philosophy that we weren't looking to make major changes
to the staff member benefits, but to simply, you know, kind of do some updating based on things that we've discussed and to kind of bring it in line to fill holes that with the expiration of the memorandum of understanding with the association, we want to make sure that the policy is complete because that was a gap-filling measure. And so, I want to go through and highlight the changes. There are some proofing changes that Sherry made and again, she makes an excellent effort at that. The first major change is under days worked. We approved a policy that's a calendar that is 192 days long, so we need to update the board policy. And I think this is one of those instances to kind of echo Mr. Crowder's concern of where will some of these decisions that we used to make enter into, that the board used to make through collective bargaining, enter into being back before the board. And this is one such example where that is an item that's in board policy that we're going to make changes, we need to come back before the board and just kind of point that out. In terms of the post-employment benefits, the changes are mostly under section one eligibility. One is we obviously removed the reference to the contract because we again had kept that policy language the same as what existed in the collective bargaining agreement per memorandum of understanding and it now references board policy. It is now board policy that determines eligibility solely. And in the past collective bargaining agreement, there was a reference to how to calculate part-time service and depending on what years that service was had, that service was counted in different ways. But for much of an employee's part-time service, they would receive half the credit, half the prorated amount of credit for their year of service and for certain years, they might receive all. And for, I think most people probably aged out of the time in which they wouldn't receive any. But there are different ways to calculate part-time service. What we're recommending here is making sure that that group is not left out. They were certainly part of the prior post-employment benefits and recommending that they would simply receive prorated credit for part-time or partial years of service. It's easier to administer, easier to understand. It's a small group of employees who are here part-time and then full-time and then long enough to receive benefits. Many of our part-time employees simply, they're here for a few years and they find full-time employment elsewhere. And again, you know, if you're talking about qualifying for full-time benefits, if you need 20 years of service and you're here half-time, you need 40 years of service and you're going to already age out of eligibility. But that's, you know, one of the more significant changes. You'll notice that we referenced the paragraphs, changed some of the cleanup language. We did eliminate under D5, we did eliminate D6, which just was a reference to, in the event of a national health insurance plan, we would revisit this in the context of a collective bargaining. The board doesn't need that reference in there anymore because the board can revisit this as it sees fit. So, if something happened, you would revisit it. And then under group life insurance, what we included was a, oh, sorry.
Mr. Meyer, are we going to take out questions at the end or...
That would be helpful, so he can continue to the end.
Okay, thank you.
Under group life insurance, what may look like an addition is really a clarification. It is the language from our life insurance contract and it is how we have administered benefits for a number of years. Dr., you could help me, I mean, that has been in there for as long as you can remember in terms of how we've administered life insurance. The reason why I want to recommend including it in the policy is because there, we want to be very clear, I think, when someone retires, that we can identify, this was the policy in the year in which you retired and this is what you were entitled to. And by having that more complete statement be in a insurance contract, we really want to make sure that in future years, we can reference our own board policies and be clear about what people are entitled to. And I would say we have had occasional questions from retirees and they will call and they will ask and we do have to go back and look through archive records and archive files and when things rely on not just the board policy, but an external contract, that then make it get difficult. So, I'm recommending inclusion of that for future HR directors after I retire, that that would be clear. So, it's not at all an addition to the benefit, but really a specification for what exists in our contract for life insurance. And then, you know, that is really the only changes. So, again, major changes, days worked, part-time eligibility and that clarifications to group life insurance. Do you want to do one policy at a time?
What's your preference for?
I think one at a time.
Okay, so you want to take questions on this section?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, Board, Mrs. Fee, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. If, I would just like to direct your attention to the second page. It's section one eligibility subsection B, benefits for employees hired before July 1, 2010. I'm probably being very dense here, but there's a reference to retirees accepted in the program. So, in regular English, that would be people who retired on or after February 1 of 1998. Is that correct?
Okay, where are you?
Yeah. Sorry. It's the second page of the policy, section one eligibility subsection B1.
Thank you.
It states that retirees accepted in the program on or after February 1, 1998 and then goes on to delineate what they shall receive. We don't ever talk about people who entered the program before 1998. Do we need to do that and if not, why?
I think that we could probably clean that up. I think that that's a vestige of collective bargaining agreement because we're not in any ways altering benefits for people who are current retirees.
Well, that was my question because we seem to either have the wrong date or be excluding people or something and I wasn't sure exactly what the issue is.
No, I think that that's something we can just clean up when it comes back before the board because we are not, not changing benefits for people who are out. It would simply be for those people hired before that date, we can clean that up.
Mr. Chanan?
Yes.
Please, before you clean that up, could you consult with Mr. Rush?
Absolutely.
Because we had a process a few years ago where we examined the benefits and if there was a specific reason for that cutoff, he may have it in his notes from those sessions.
Yes.
I'm fine with what Mrs. Fee said and what you've said up to now, but just to say that I do recall, and Mrs. Randall was here and a couple other board members as well, that there was a lot of examination of what our relationship was to various existing retirees and if there was a reason for that, he would know it and hopefully there's not, but...
No, I definitely would consult with him. I'm aware of that process, so, yeah.
Yes, okay.
That's all, thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
The days worked, the change from 191 to 192. We just really recently approved that contract with a recommendation of 191 days.
That would be an act of, there is no days stated in the contract because it's referenced in board policy and when we approved the calendar, the calendar was approved with 192. So, this is actually a catch-up to our calendar that was previously approved.
Calendar was approved with 192?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and the days worked in the contract itself was intentionally not put in there with a reference to board policy to provide the board the flexibility to speak on that as it sees fit and not have to continually modify the contracts.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yeah, I was wondering about, and then real quickly, same page Mrs. Fee was on, but section one eligibility. Could you just go over again? You're saying that in the past, a teacher who maybe came in two-thirds of the way into the year or worked the entire year but worked part-time or whatever, that over the past, in the past, that depending on who was in charge sometimes, that service was counted in different ways?
I think the collective bargaining agreement treated that service differently and evolved over time. So, there were different, three different paragraphs that spoke to how part-time service would be treated and it sometimes it gave no credit, it sometimes it gave for a brief time, I don't think it's full credit, and for a majority of time, gave half the prorated credit. And so, it was, and then also in that same section, gave one day of seniority and years of service. So, they were mutually conflicting paragraphs. They weren't very clear, but some credit was given for part-time. Obviously, the goal here is to make something that is fair, that is reasonable and that is clearly understood. If you worked three and a half years, you've three and a half years of service. If you worked, you know, a 50% contract, that's a half a year. If you worked a 90% contract and more and more, we are seeing some circumstances where you will have an employee be full-time or full-time equivalent and then 90% and then full-time and then 90% again. I can think of one or two examples. And I don't know whether or not that is equitable to say, well, you worked 90%, that's really four and a half. You really, in doing that, that one individual would have lost a whole year of service despite the fact that what he really gave to our district was something much closer to four year, .9 year, .9. So, you know, a lot of this is really just, this seems equitable. In terms of cost of the district, it's really small, it's a small group of employees who are really part-time, who are there that long and our part-time employees who do stick around for long enough that their cumulative part-time service is 20 years has, have given this district a lot.
Okay.
And that's a very small group. But it's usually people, quite frankly, who end up going full-time for quite a number of years.
Okay, thanks. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Crowder, please.
My first question, and I don't know what policy it would be in, but it applies to professional staff members. I noticed in the handbook, it lists the, it mentioned said that a workday is considered an eight-hour day and then just after that, it lists the times that the schools are open.
Yes.
It's not eight hours, but nowhere in the handbook does it say when teachers are supposed to report to work or leave work. And I was just wondering, is that not designated anymore? Is that not in a policy or is that, can we not have them, you know, be required to be there before school and after school so students and parents can meet with them? I mean, I've been in situations where teachers left immediately when school was out because they had other, you know, they had other requirements. So, I'm just wondering about that one issue since this policy deals with teachers.
That is by design and the reason that we're looking at it that way is because it is a profession. And if we want our teachers to be professional, we need to treat them like professionals and it still is going to be a situation where if somebody has an issue that they need to leave early, they work with the principal and they're able to do that. The responsibility, and I've always said, the responsibility is you need to be there to be able to teach the students and do the job you need to do. And I don't think there's a teacher that's in our district that is in good stead that can show up five minutes before school starts and leave right afterward and do an effective job. And it's really approach of treating our professionals like professionals and I think whether we put times down or not, I don't think it's going to, it's going to impact us. I think by not doing it and outwardly stating that we want our teachers treated as professionals and act professionally, then I think we'll get better results from it and that's why it wasn't stated. But clearly, it's, I mean, the expectation is an eight-hour day. I think most teachers work more than eight hours, but the expectation is an eight-hour day if they're not putting in eight hours. Whether they come early or, and they come late and leave early, it's not an eight-hour day. And if comes a problem, we'll address it, the same as we have right now. And we've addressed some issues with staff members and it's, generally speaking, we don't look and say, it's because of a specific time, it's because they're coming in as the kids are coming in and it's unacceptable. You can't, you can't be ready for your students when you're showing up the same time they do.
I realize the board has probably no role in modifying that, but I, it bothers me that teachers can just come when school starts and leave when school ends and make the students and parents make appointments to see the teachers. I know a lot of times students need to see teachers and they go to, you know, they need, I think they need to know that they can go to the classroom at a certain time outside of class and the teacher is likely to be there. So, I understand that's probably won't change, but I would like to see an administrative policy where the teachers at least show up to school for, you know, a certain amount of time before school starts and stay a certain amount of time after school ends, depending on particular circumstances like coaching and stuff, things like that, so that parents and teachers know that they have someone that they can talk to at certain times, like office hours in a way. I don't think it's unprofessional to have, to make teachers and other employees have office hours. They do it at universities and other colleges, but I realize we don't have a role in that.
May I say, typically, I would expect to make an appointment to see a teacher before the bell schedule starts or after the bell schedule ends and that as part of being professional, every teacher I've ever known carries work home and does significant work away from the building. So, to punch the clock and watch the bell schedule is not at all a valid reflection on the commitment and the effort. And I do agree with the idea that office hours, published office hours are good. I don't know that we require that in our buildings and I would, do we or do we not?
No. No, but if we have, if there's a concern where a parent can't meet with a teacher, we'll address it. If a parent expresses a concern that they're not able to get ahold of a teacher, it's unacceptable and we'll address it. But we don't get all those concerns. I mean, it just doesn't happen and I, and if it does happen, it'll be addressed.
So, the building administrators know what their teachers are doing. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Dr. Erdl? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please, Mr. Crowder. I just wanted to clarify that.
My last comment has to do with post-employment benefits and I know we've, people have frequently said that the concession that we got in the contract where people hired after July 2010 had retirement age of 57 was a concession. I have to say personally, I don't see a financial benefit that's going to... I have to say personally, I don't see a financial benefit that's going to accrue twenty or thirty years down the road as such a big concession. I would like the board to consider a retirement age of fifty-seven across the board, and I wouldn't apply to everyone, but people that were fifty or older, within five years of retirement, would still keep the age of fifty-five. But I think we should consider an age of fifty-seven for anyone that's further out from retirement from that. I'm not sure that we'll see action on that, but that's just, that's what I was thinking about as I read this section.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mrs. Randall?
Just because a discussion came up, I do want to support the eight-hour day and the flexibility, you know, elementary teachers work, you know, with different populations of kids with different needs, middle school, some parents may be more involved at the elementary level in general. So certainly, every teacher, well, you know, I've had issues, they've been addressed, but they were few and far between. And I fully agree that if we expect people to act like professionals, we do need to treat them like professionals. So I, I'm very supportive of that. You know, early retirement, a recommendation like that would need to come from our administrators with a really valid reason for making a change like that, and, you know, we have people who understand that this is a benefit that they have been earning and expect to continue to earn it. So just to kind of willy-nilly say, you know, let's talk about changing it, that, those kinds of things need to come with very solid recommendations for very serious discussion.
Okay. I, I'd like to move on to Pickett. I don't think it was-
No, that's fine.
But wait, I don't think it was willy-nilly. I think the, the comments were well-considered, and we do have a disagreement. And if there's more comment that will add to what's already been said, that's new information, then please, I, please ask to speak or have the floor, but I just wanted to respect everyone's view, especially, you know, Mrs. Randall and Mr. Crowder, you're both very sincere in your convictions, and very well-thought-through this, so thank you. Mr. Crowder, do you have more to say?
I guess what I'd like to add is the things I've been thinking about as I read through this, is I'm trying to, I understand that the employees paid more for retirement and more for insurance, and had a pay freeze last year, but still, money's tight, and I'm trying to think of ways that we can save money with having little or no impact on the employees, and moving retirement benefits, wellness programs that don't cost anything to employees. I'm, I'm thinking of ways to try to save money that we might spend in other ways, perhaps even on salary, without having a huge impact on employees. So that, my goal is not to punish employees, but try to find efficient ways to save money without having large impacts.
Thank you. Everyone, next, next item, are we ready?
Yes. Okay. The next item is thirty-four twenty-two E Select Employees, and it's not redlined, because it's a policy that does not exist. What did exist before was a manual that was akin to a collective bargaining agreement. What we've done here is taken the essential elements that mirror our administrative benefit policy and our other benefit policies, and pared them down, again, not recommending changes to their post-retirement benefits, not recommending changes to their current holidays, or any of the other, you know, general benefits that are covered by our other policies. With, you know, by the one exception, obviously, that we are recommending that the cash in lieu of not exist for any employees. One of the reasons why it can be slimmed down from the Select Employee Guidelines is because those guidelines contained other statements approved by the board that are now in other board policy. So, for example, the old, the old policy or guidelines adopted in oh-four contained a grievance procedure, which is covered under other policies. It talked about creation or elimination of positions, covered by another policy. It talks about probationary employment, which is really not something that is a concept in any of our policies any longer. I think that we've, we've moved to not make statements about cause and just cause in employment, but really moved towards that at-will. We do have a policy on disciplining employees. Seniority, and how to select employees, and again, we have policies on hiring, we have policies on years of service where it's appropriate, for example, in, in post-retirement benefits. And we don't necessarily make seniority-based decisions, although years of service is a factor in, say, transfers. So the, the guidelines that existed in oh-four have really been pared down to create the policy that mirrors every other group, and really keep it in the simplest terms possible so that it can be consistent with our other policies, and referenced in the handbook in the same way.
Any board questions or comments? Mrs. Fee, yes?
Thank you, just a quick one, and I apologize, I intended to look this up myself earlier today, and I neglected to do so. I just want to confirm or verify that our definition section of our policies does contain a definition of select employees? Because if it does not, then we would certainly, I think we would need to define what exactly that is.
Yes, and we, I don't think that that is in the policy definition. What this policy does is directs the administration to keep a list, because it is an odd assortment of employees.
Right.
And so we would, we would then have an administrative guideline that, that actually listed the positions that, that count. And it, and it has varied, for, so for example, when we approved the athletic director at West High School, that person was approved as a, as a new select employee. So it is a, is a fluid list, and to solve that definitional problem, because I don't know that I could write a definition, I think we'd have to write a list.
Okay, as long as it's covered somewhere, because people need to know if this applies to them or not. That's my only concern.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, yeah. And again, you'll also notice that this does clarify something that was not clear in the old guidelines, which was, it does distinguish between exempt and non-exempt. And there was always some confusion in that the guidelines themselves had rules that almost exclusively applied to our non-exempt hourly employees, but also purported to cover our salaried employees who operated under kind of that contract of, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine days worked, but then it contained vacation provision. So we tried to separate out in this policy between exempt and non-exempt, and then there'd be a list, and you could see if it applied to you.
Thank you.
So may I follow up on that? So there's not a definition, but there's a roster, so to speak?
Not of names, but of positions.
Of positions. And that roster of positions is, was one by one so-declared as select by board action when the position was created? Do we not-
When they were created by, yes, the old policy had, the old guidelines had that list in it, we would take that list and transfer it to an administrative guideline. So there's a list. It's superintendent secretary, the director of human resources secretary.
Oh, okay, that's, that's fine. I was just inquiring further with whether we need to, perhaps in the consent agenda, you know, ratify that list of select positions, or whether it's well-understood how positions got to that list, or didn't get, you, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that the, the last guidelines were adopted in two thousand and four, and it has a list in that, and I guess what I'm recommending in terms of policy is that you delegate that to the administrative guidelines.
Okay.
Obviously, as we create and hire new positions, like the athletic director, we class that person as, as select. The reality is, we didn't go back and modify the two thousand and four board policy. So there is a board vote that says, we hired this athletic director, he's select, there he is, we know what he is, but those guidelines haven't been updated since two thousand and four. So I, I think this is a-
Excuse me, not that we need to, I wasn't trying to suggest that, just so that there's a, a clear path to how a position got to the list, and we can-
Yeah.
Point to it, so that if somebody challenges, as we can say, here was the process, there's the-
Yeah, the answer is, they've either been voted on by the board on an individual basis, or were included in the two thousand and four guidelines.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I'm, Mr. Crowder, please?
Just to follow up on that, I know on page five of the employee handbook, it lists the employee groups.
Yes.
And I, if we're going to have a policy that has a name of a group, like professional staff administrators, now that it has been brought up, it occurs to me, it'd be very useful to have a definition of who that covers in the policy. So my question is, if we can write this list for the handbook once a year, it seems like we could update, put these definitions in the policies, and just update them once a year when we update the handbook.
Right, and for those other groups, they are defined, because there's a professional staff definition, administrator, and, and I think other support staff. So those are, those are defined places. The problem with select employees, it was defined in another document that is duplicated by other board policies, and it comes down to that question, what governs? The oh-four policies, or the policies you've been adopting since then? I would argue the policies that you've been adopting since then. So this particular group does not lend itself to definition, and perhaps over time, maybe it just, it doesn't lend itself, it's confidential support, it's, it's a hodgepodge of special positions, and it lends itself to a list. But with those other positions, there's, there is a definition, I believe, in the definition section. I'm certain for professional staff, administrators.
Okay. And one other comment, since this is a new policy, I have a comment about the funeral leave section.
Yes.
And I've mentioned this before, we list father, mother, brother, sister, wife, husband, child, son-in-law, or daughter-in-law of the employer or spouse. I'd like to suggest that we add the word partner. If we always give partners funeral leave, then we should put it in our policy. One, I don't think it's fair to make them jump through a different hoop than other people have to, and two, I think it's to be a selling point for the district, shows that we're, we're inclusive, and that people that have significant partners are going to be treated like other people in this situation. So I think there are a number of policies where this language exists, and I'd like to suggest that we just simply add the word partner.
I propose this, that as a procedural matter, for, as a result of our discussion tonight, when can administration have any modifications or changes that administration recommends put into the paper documents and, and deliver to the board sometime next week?
Yeah, the inclusion of the word partner would be easy, I guess what I would recommend is that we would-
I'm not saying you make that decision tonight, I'm saying that after we adjourn, and you go back to your, you know, your business early next week, and consider what your administrative recommendation would be, when can you commit that recommendation? It would be a wording change that you would note for us, and whether it's there or not, whether you decide to change or not to change, that when can the documents be delivered to the board next week, so that we can have advanced notice of what your final wording is?
Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. So paper copies of what you ask us to vote on will be delivered to the board in, Tuesday or Wednesday. I would ask then, if any board member is not liking the particular wording, whatever that wording is, that an amendment be drafted and forwarded to the superintendent as soon as possible, and ideally, it would be distributed by the superintendent to the full board by the end of next week, so that the board would have the weekend to consider it, and then that would be a, a motion that was planned to be made to amend the recommendation on Monday. So whatever administration's recommendation is, it would be delivered to us Tuesday, Wednesday next week. Board members would have opportunity to draft amending motions, and as soon as is practically possible, they would be delivered to the board as well, and then we will have notice of what administration's action items will be, and what amendments are contemplated for motion to the action items. So we, we, of course, we can't vote or decide on particular wording tonight, and it's very spontaneous here to expect you to, you know, decide as an administrative recommendation. So can, how does that sound as a process? Yes, Mr. Crowder?
My only concern is that I don't intend for me to make a recommendation, all of a sudden, the administration's going to decide whether they're going to propose it or not, but the full board is here, so the, the board either now, at some other time when these policies come up, can discuss it, we could actually maybe decide whether we want to give direction to the administration in that issue. I think that's another way to proceed.
Looking for a process that we, we can follow analytically and mechanically without having to turn to the superintendent at the end of the night and say, now, do you know what we want you to do? And to speak on the substance, I would support such wording, and if it's presented, I will vote for it. If it's not, if it's not presented, then if it's presented as an amendment, if, if you make the amendment, Mr. Crowder, I, I will support the amendment with my vote. So the administration knows what I think, and they know what you think. If other board members would like to speak to it tonight, it's-
I can tell you, I don't have a problem including it. I don't know. I, I think that one of the, the things that I would recommend, if we were going to make that type of change, is that we would come back with all five policies. So I'd rather do it all in one fell swoop and come back with all five of them, and, I mean, it's not necessary, we wanted to present the other ones in draft form at the next board meeting, so that we could vote on these, and then you'd have the other three, say, the administrator policy. We can keep that just rolling along, if that, that were something the board wanted.
Mr. Chanan, then please, I would ask that you consider what is the most logical, effective, efficient way to proceed to bring these things to a vote, and if, for example, the, the way you suggest is to bring thirty-four twenty-two E to a vote as it is Tuesday night, I mean, I mean, on the, I think it's the eleventh, and then on a following meeting, bring the, the package of five policies that would be affected by this, to have a consistency, then we could vote in, in that respect on that night.
Yeah, I, I think the easiest way to bring that forward is, is we, obviously, we have two policies before you, thirty-four twenty-two A and thirty-four twenty-two E, and if that were a change that we'd recommend, we'd bring it forward to the next board meeting, and then perhaps we'd agenda the initial read of the other policies at the same time, and that way, obviously, if that vote failed, or if there were changes that were not approved, then perhaps we would not bring other policies forward for a vote. I mean, that's, you know, we would have to see where, where the board stood.
Okay, well, I will support, as president, support agenda in whatever is the most efficient way you believe to proceed to a vote on the substance that is efficient for operations of the district. So I'm sure Dr. Earl will let me know next week when we meet on the agenda. Mr. Crowder, are you satisfied that the substance of the suggestion will be appropriately acted on?
Yes, I mean, I, I don't know if there are any background issues that might affect what's in there, so that's why I'm-
Neither do I, which is why it's good that they have a chance to think about this, and, and bring to us the, in the mechanism that makes the most sense, after they've had time to consider any other ramifications or issues, and they could bring those to us as well. Okay. Mrs. Mufti?
Thank you. So my question for you on an item like that within policy is, I understood that the conversation that we just had was specific to funeral leave.
Yes.
However, there are other places in our policies where we, if we're philosophically saying- saying that we would like to equate partner like spouse, there are other, and I don't know that that is the sentiment of the board, it's just a question, then we do have other policy language that we would consider changing in other benefit areas of our policies.
Currently, excuse me. Currently, for example, our FMLA policy, you know, is required by state law to recognize domestic partner leave. So there already is in our policy that split in terms of, I can have state FMLA leave for certain circumstances, but I can't take funeral leave. So there is that kind of split here, and I think that that's a recognition. I think we might have to think through where else that would see its way through. If we're talking about other major benefit shifts, you know, in terms of recognizing, you know, domestic partners, in terms of insurance benefits, I mean, that is a larger discussion about benefits and costs and other things that, I don't think that the funeral leave or the use of sick leave to care for someone in your immediate family is something that shifts the needle in terms of costs within the district. I think it's, and in some ways, it makes it consistent with, in terms of required FMLA leave policies. But yes, that would have to be thought through.
So we're in your judgment, things do not shift the cost needle. Those you will consider as a group for us on a short-term, short runway here. Things that do shift the cost needle, is it a bigger, different conversation?
Yeah, I don't think it would be appropriate to bring back as a quick policy revision, absolutely.
Are we? Okay. Mrs. Randall, did you have something?
Mine's a clarification. I can talk to Dan about it at another time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
The next is a recommendation for salary increases for administration and non-represented employees. And our recommendation is a 2% salary pool for each of those groups. And I know there was concerns brought up in the past about doing it at this point, but I think the board, I still believe the board has an obligation. As the contract year begins July 1st, and we can, I think Mr. Mack has some costings that he can share, projected total package costs of each of these groups. But I think in each teacher contract, it's a two-year contract, we project costs out, quite a ways out in front of those. Couple of our other associations are three-year contracts that carry a salary increase in each of those. So I think it's fair. I think I'd like to have it completed. I'd like to have contracts and salaries completed for the groups that we can at this point. I think it's financially feasible to do it at this point. Both of these are fairly small groups. There's some obviously costs associated with it, but I think it's an opportunity to do something when we can do it and not have to wait through a negotiations process or... But, Mr. Mack, can you kind of touch on the-
Yes. With the 2% salary increase, for administration, it would come out to a total package of right around 2%, maybe slightly under. And I know that sounds a little bit different, but the health insurance increase that I just received, first estimate, is actually slightly negative. And I would recommend keeping it at 0%, even if it is a little slightly negative. Now, we still have a few more months to go, but that's why I'm saying that the switch of people plus 65 out and the high deductible plan, I think, has driven home consumerism much more than expected, I guess. And it, the other thing it's done is, what we did target, I think the board all knows this, was it targeted their retirement group too, because they had to participate in the high deductible, and they didn't get locked in with whatever they went out with. So the reason, it is slightly below 2%, basically, if you increase the salaries 2%, there are, in administration, there's about a handful of people, or six people, that are at the FICO max, where FICO actually goes, it doesn't go up, it goes about 1.5%. And the dental increase pushes it that, just slightly above. So it's right around 2%. Now, that doesn't include eliminating cash of lieu of. If we eliminate cash of lieu of the total package, if nobody switches onto health insurance, it's about 1.5%. It's actually below, because we lose the people, the administrators, there's about one, two, three, four, five, there's six of them that have the cash in the wolf. So there's like $14,400 there. I don't know, most of those people are married to other educators, so I don't, my guess is, if I had a guess, I don't know if any of them are going to pick up health insurance under the high deductible plan if we eliminate the cash in the wolf. So the 2% increase is going to be right around either a 2% or less package for the administrators. For the non-bargaining group, the exempted players, it'll, I haven't done the total costing for them, but it's going to look similar to this. You're going to have some savings on the cash in the wolf. However, we would grant them the step increases that they would normally get in that group, which could push that total package, perhaps in a 2.5% range. But dollar-wise, it's rather small. So it's really not a big impact, either the total package.
Are you ready for comments or questions?
Sure.
Board? Mrs. Randall?
Yeah, no, I am going to ask the question. I was going to ask the clarifying question. Select employees shall be classified as exempt or non-exempt based on FLSA. Could you explain that? Exempt from what in FLSA is what?
Yeah, the Fair Labor Standards Act, it's a federal law that requires that all employees be either exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, or non-exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act in general. A non-exempt employee is one to whom we owe overtime, and if they work more than 40 hours in a week. And a exempt employee is a employee, like a professional staff member, who does not get overtime payments if they work more than 40 hours a week, and are generally paid on a salary basis.
So it's primarily the hours worked, or the way of compensating?
Well, it's not really the way of compensating, because you can-
Overtime, I mean-
It's overtime eligibility. It's a federal, and then there's a corresponding state law.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And we, I believe, do have a list of our select employees-
Correct.
That's pretty up to date, because I think it came up within negotiations for wages?
Yeah.
It's completely up to date.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is completely up to date. So you know what positions are exempt, non-exempt?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Because I thought I heard discussion before that we didn't-
I think the question was one about process, which is if someone asked, well, how did they make the list? Do we have a history to say how they made it there? And then, yes.
Yeah. There was a pretty extensive process, but it never got to completion under your predecessor. So I know that. Okay. So thank you for that explanation. That's all for now.
Mr. Croner?
You never did state what the amount was. You talked in percentages.
Or would you, I think the best way to do it is to say that cash in lieu of is, let's leave that, because I don't know if anybody's going to switch to health insurance for the year you transition. The total dollar amount that I have is, I pushed it into salaries and benefits. The salary amount is 63, about 63,791. And the benefit amount I have is 76,096.
Is this principals and administrators combined?
It's principals and administrators. And there's some, it's everybody who's classified as an administrator. There's 33 people in the district.
Okay, so it's, okay. So I guess my only concern about discussing this in isolation is that we've not had a discussion about the overall salary structure for the other employees in the district. And I know that supposedly, over the last year, we've been discussing pay options for the teachers, which is a bigger program. But I think it would be helpful to have a discussion of this in the context of that at some point. And I don't know when that would happen. Because this is money that we're putting here, and we haven't had the discussion about what other salary structures it might be used for, or what other purposes it could be used for.
Okay. Is, it's a fair, a fair comment, I believe?
It's a comment. People aren't required to reply.
I can agree. I'm not saying I won't support it. I'm saying that the broader context, as you've always heard me say, is important. The opportunity cost question. We spend money one place, we don't spend it somewhere else. And we wish we were farther along in the compensation model development, but we're working. Do you have any inkling tonight about where we will be in that compensation model process this year, during the summer and during the fall?
Well, I still hope to have something presented to the board before the start of next school year, for the 13, 14 school year, along with the completed negotiations, hopefully, for the 12, 13.
Okay. And is the 2% recommendation, is this a one-year recommendation, or is, we're speaking one-year increments now? Okay.
The other thing I would like to mention, Mr. Croner, just seeing under Dan too, that in a budget, though, there is the money built in for the teacher increases. It's just a matter of how it's going to be distributed more, and it probably is what, is that what you're more getting at, that actual distribution. And I, I think that, from my perception of working with Mr. Shannon and Dr. Ehrle, it's simply that, that process is more complicated because it involves changing the way, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, changing the way teachers are evaluated, and how that award system, Mr. Rush was talking about too, about you have your base pay, and then are you going to have different levels of, what do you want to call, merit pay, or different other levels of compensation? I think it gets more complicated, just because there's a vast group of people in there, and you have to have a different system in place to do it.
Well, and I think the other piece is, it's really leaning strongly toward a state compens, well, we're getting off topic, but a state compensation system to go along with the state evaluation system. So-
Let me be on my-
So the broader discussion is at hand. In the period of the next three months, we will be getting to the broader discussion. This particular recommendation for the 2% is a one-year decision. The broader discussion affects not the 2012, 13 school year, but the following school year. So there is a logic to it. It's not as quickly as any of us would like. I'm sure all of us would wish it were a faster process, but we're doing what we can.
I would suggest that these two groups are two groups that, for compensation, could have been compensated any possible way the board has wanted to for an expensive period. I mean, they haven't had a union or agreement to say, can't compensate differently. So, but I do think it's worth, the administration is going to be under a new compensation model that, or a new evaluation system that is going to be, 50% of it's going to be on student performance in their buildings, or ultimately, when they develop the system all the way through, how well we do as a district for me. So there is going to be, they're in the process.
Mrs. Randall?
One clarification question. Did you say that whatever we do for the teachers will be a two-year period?
No, one year.
Okay. That's what I thought. We're issuing one-year contracts?
Yep.
And if we have a collective bargaining agreement, it will be for one year?
Correct. One-year contracts, and we still, part of the exec session discussion will be the negotiations. We have to negotiate that with them.
Okay.
But it'll be a one-year.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I was late. So my question is, outside of negotiations, if we were to say, yes, we want to give administration 2%, and yes, we want to give all of our teachers 2%, outside of collective bargaining, can we do that?
Yes. With the way Mr. Rush, yeah, with the way it's costed, you can, you can say you want every employee to get 10%, every teacher. And we can, I mean, we can, the control is there outside of the base wage piece. I mean, I've done some calculations to how to look at our teachers in, for this coming year, to make sure they don't get a decrease, and looked at it so they can get an increase, and how we cost it with the base wage, and what supplemental pay is, and what the additional pay above the supplemental pay. So, yes, to answer your question, I'll just say yes.
Okay. So these are process questions. So hypothetically, if this board would say, you know, we want to authorize a 2% increase for all of our teachers, and then the association would come to you and say, we want to bargain. What I'm wondering is it-
We got to bargain first before we, we got to bargain first, and then-
Why?
Because we have to settle base wages before we can look at supplemental wages.
But do we have, we don't have to settle base wages at the table. We can do that on our own, right?
We have an obligation to bargain in good faith with our representative units about base wages. It's just, it's an obligation that we have by statute on that one topic.
Okay. If, if both parties, or if either one of the parties requests negotiations, right?
No, because they're represented, we have an obligation to, we have an obligation to bargain. We, we want to request that, and we want to, you know, enter into that process and see where that leads us. If, obviously, we come to an impasse, there are, it's a rather one-sided resolution process, in terms of the board being able to implement its last final offer. But we have an obligation to go to the table and negotiate in good faith over base wages.
Okay. Then I must ask the other question wrong, because I said if the board would say, tonight, obviously we won't, that we want to give our teachers 2% increase, that we could do that?
Ultimately, yes. We can.
I'm going to say we haven't agended the teacher conversation tonight.
But what I want, my point is, once we enter into negotiations, then we are under a certain set of rules when we talk about that. But can we talk about it outside of that?
I believe there's a closed session to talk about bargaining afterwards. So I think that that's probably the appropriate place for the discussion where it's been agenda.
Okay.
Okay. And to clarify, as a point of agenda discussion and action, the idea that the supplemental pay could be held hostage by the bargaining process is not a decision tonight.
No, but, but am I going to be allowed to talk about it in an exec session?
Well, we can find out what, they'll advise us in exec session, well, we can talk about it in exec session. But the teacher compensation that's non-bargaining is, I think, is not agenda, as we worded the agenda tonight. Is that right?
For the open session?
Yes, for this open session, no.
No.
Yeah, so let's, let's try to, as far as the broader, needing to know a broader context for the 2%, I think we've explored that. And now to get into what we can offer the teachers for a non, although, you know, Mr. Rush was here earlier, and he gave a pretty broad description of what we could do. So it probably, some of your questions probably would be handled already. So I'm going to backtrack, that if we had Mr. Rush who were talking and saying what he did, that it wasn't the scope of the agenda, that we talked about this.
Thank you.
So I stand corrected?
I think you're right.
Okay. Well, the second time it was, the first time I was wrong. Well, the second time it was, the first time I was wrong.
Thank you.
Any more, Mrs. Randall?
Nope.
Okay, thanks.
Not right now.
All right. Anyone else, please?
On that topic or anything else?
Anything on the agenda?
May I?
Yes, please.
I wanted to talk about the wellness policy. I thought it would come up when we talked about the policies, but it didn't. So this is a place we've talked about before, where it's, if I remember how our discussions that employees are required once a year or once every other year to visit a physician for a physical, and maybe participate in some plan to try to improve their health at no cost to the employee, and that that would lower our health insurance costs. So it's, you mentioned, you've been talking about this with the insurance companies, that they might run a trial run. I've been reading in the paper where other districts have implemented this, where they say, you know, you either, you have a choice of paying increased deductibles, or participating in a wellness plan, or maybe increased contribution to insurance premiums, or participate in a wellness plan. But the point is, if they participate, there's no, no cost to the employee and a savings for the district. So it's not, I just like to know more why we, why we couldn't implement it for next year.
When we, when we talked to the insurance calls, we talked about a phased-in rollout as their recommendation, in part because you want to get buy-in and sort of take an approach where you say, and now you will be well, or face the consequence, would probably produce some resistance that'd be counterproductive to the long-term goal of the program. The other side of that recommendation was our discussion administratively in terms of wanting to keep the benefit package fairly consistent this year, given the rapid change. And so to roll out a plan that, a wellness plan will cost the district money, and to roll out a plan that would immediately offset that by raising premiums or other costs, would again, it can be done, but it is that matter of timing and creating the buy-in and creating some awareness where we're not being counterproductive. I think that right now, our insurance plan is running a little negative and running low, and it may be possible to bring back a recommendation to build in a voluntary wellness program when we don't have an insurance increase that's fiscally feasible, and then roll it out more broadly with those other changes where we've already gotten some buy-in with employees. So I hope that answered your question, but it was based on discussions with Mike Newberger, and, yeah, we certainly could do it the other way. It wasn't his recommendation, our discussion, if you wanted to comment on it too.
John, what do you, what about the idea of offering an incentive? Looking at it a different way, an incentive to participate the first year, and then it becomes something that was discussed.
What we discussed, and we just had one serious discussion with Hays Companies, and there's different ways to approach this, and we will get into this more over the next year or so, and I anticipate we have to figure out the best way to do it without creating adverse selection or desélection, so that people who maybe need to lose some weight, you know, you want to do it so you don't get turned off by it and saying, I'm just going to pay the money and do that. We want to make it so we incentivize, just what Dr. Erdel said, we make incentives for people to participate. And I think it's got to be rolled in gradually, because it's one of those things where you can, you can tell a person, well, you know, you're going to lose 30 pounds over the next year, or you're going to end up paying more in premium. But realistically, we have to give people some time to phase that in. It might take two or three years to get that going. But in my opinion, we're moving that way. We've had some discussion with them, and we'll continue to do it, and they're going to give us ideas on the best way to approach our type of organization, and they have experience with that. So we are working toward that. It's not like we haven't...
Okay. Well, as long as we're moving in that direction, I think that's good. My intent was not to develop a program that employees are going to feel compelled that if they don't make health improvements, that that's a negative thing, but I was, my understanding initially was that just having people go in for physicals might catch some potentially serious situations that they could correct, that might save long-term serious healthcare costs. So that's where I was going.
And I think that even a program like that, and again, we cover wellness visits, so it's not, there's no cost for employees to do that now. Even a program like that has costs, in that to be effective, we really need to bring back to you someone to manage that, whether it's Humana or a third party, that would track the data and make recommendations, because part of that is getting people to make those choices to go in and visit, then helps us to customize our program in the future. So it's not as easy as to say, we can institute a wellness program and it will be costless, because even the most minimal program is going to require some additional resources. And so we want to get that advice from Hays and have them do some designing, and quite frankly, look at our current, current issues within our health plan, to be recommending a program that actually is designed for us.
Okay. As long as we're moving in that direction, I think that's a good thing.
Okay. So are we wrapped up, or are there more?
We're good.
We're good. Okay. When the wellness question or the conversation comes to us, I heard Mr. Rush's humble yet thoughtful opinion that it be presented as part of a broader healthcare scheme, so to speak, and that was the, and when you bring that to us, please bring us data on outcomes for employee health, that it, and I know you care about employee health, so I'm just wanting to explicitly say, as I said before, our altruistic and stewardship goals here are important as well, that we have a program that is a balance between financial responsibility and positive health outcomes for the employees. It's, from my perspective, it's, saving money may be enough, but it may not be enough. We may want to see the health outcomes as well and evidence to that. Okay. So this is what I propose for a process, that the items that the administration wants to bring to vote on the 11th, the, I meet with the superintendent, I believe, on Wednesday to set the agenda or to discuss agenda next week. And so that won't, the agenda won't be, the full agenda won't be published soon enough to give the lead time that I hoped for. So if the items, the wording of the items for vote that we discussed tonight could be delivered to the board in paper packet form by Tuesday or Wednesday, if any board members are happy with electronic form, then please email to the superintendent and Ernie Cottie to let her know that that's sufficient. Otherwise, we'll default to paper form. But those action items will be delivered. It will not be the full agenda, but it will be a chance for you to see in writing the wording of the action items for vote, and that wording will be what will be included in the final agenda that is posted at the end of next week. And then if, please, I ask that if there are amendments contemplated, that they be communicated to the superintendent by end of next week in time to get them to the board as well, so that all board members can consider the written amendments prior to Monday night. You are not required to do that, as you can make a motion, of course, from the floor on an amendment, but just as a courtesy to us, so we have time to think. Does that sound okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Dr. Erdel, I'm good with electronic communication.
All right. Okay. With that, I will entertain motion to move into executive session to consider matters pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E regarding negotiations with the Wauwatosa Education Association and the Wauwatosa Educational Support Association and Local 1561. Do we have a motion?
They'll move.
Mrs. Weber moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroes?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer, yes. We're now in closed session. Do we need a break before we actually start?